There is, I see there was a key in our nightstand, I never looked to see if that's what the key was for. Yeah, she sits down, there's about dozen people.
Rick, you're on, you're on, you're on speaker.
Good, can you, can you see me? Can you hear me? Yep, I'm good. It's good to know our security works really well.
Not to be mad, but what's temp?
It's pretty hot out here at eight in the morning.
So what's the temp?
Probably about eighty-five, eighty, eighty-five.
They're calling for what fifteen below tonight? Actual temperature, windshield is forty.
Really?
Should we put a thermos of that and send it to you?
Yeah, please do. Might need to cool off later. Yeah, I imagine the schools are closed, aren't they?
No, well today it's only eight below.
Really? Hey, when I went to school, we'd never, we would be halfway through our bus route. And it had to be, I mean, we were plowing through snow and we'd always, it was always Calvin Stewart's place, always Calvin Stewart's place, I don't know why. They'd get on the, on the thing and they'd, he'd come out and he said, they just canceled school. But that was very rare.
My son-in-law came here from Jamaica on Friday. I said, well, at least you got here when it was warm, and you said, this is warm? I get it all the way to the yeah, it was warm.
Yeah.
Okay, Bruce, have you already opened up the meeting?
Oh, we're waiting for the picture to come on.
So I'll let you run the meeting, Bruce Beans, you're there.
I will as soon as I get Trish to sit down or to. We don't, do you want to go without the picture?
Oh, I can see you guys, so I don't need to.
You can see us?
Yeah, I can see you guys just fine.
Well, then it's gotta be our TVs.
And I can hear you just fine.
Well, let's go ahead. Pledge then.
Ready to go.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All meeting to order, and you have nothing else to go on, Trish? Okay, proof the agenda is printed then?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first.
I'll second.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same side, motion carry. We have the minutes from twelve thirteen.
I looked at them earlier and they seemed like they were in order.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to the minutes for January thirteenth. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Oh, same sign, motion carry. General public concerns? None, so we'll move on, and is there a Billy Scott? You don't have to get up with your, we can hear you.
We're here to request money for our pool in Livermore. We're facing like a hundred and three thousand dollar uh new filter system. You've been giving this money every year to help uh run the pool. So we got a lot of people from Humboldt to come up there and use it.
How much do we normally give you a year? Not near that.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We'll take that, no, uh it's been running about sixteen hundred dollars. So if you could increase it any somewhat or all or.
Okay.
We could.
Take whatever you can get.
Have you ever applied for that community betterment grant? I mean, it's too late now for this year, but.
We did apply for it this year. So our name is in there and they, I think they award that, what, the end of the month?
When you hear that, make sure you go to the meeting because you have to be there, right?
Yeah, I've done it after Legion in the fire department, but the city did apply for it this year, yeah, like Billy said, we're looking. I just had the pool guy up there Friday and lays his numbers, he gave us the new filter, new piping and everything, we're looking at a hundred and three thousand dollars.
Are you gonna try to do any fundraising or anything?
Yes, they had a silent auction thing, when Bob and Julie Folt had their carriage ride thing, they did silent auction and stuff up to Legion, so we got money from that. We've had a can bin in town for seven, eight years now, so you donate your cans, all that money goes to the pool. We'd have some money raised for it, but every little bit helps.
Yeah.
We've been, they've been, treasurer's been putting for grants.
Yeah, we tried for a grant with Colton Cole and got denied, I mean, we didn't last, uh, Cassous County and tried Tees Foundation because half our lifeguard. We get, we get a lot of Cassous County people to come down too, but Cassous County said no.
And I know you probably. I know you probably can't answer this, but what is the average people you get a day or?
On a real hot hundred degree day, a lot of hundred people there.
Really?
Can you go up there and like run into people that, why are you up here? Humboldt was so busy and I just wanted to come up here to relax and I knew I'd come up here, the waiting pool is free. So people drive past the Humboldt pool because it's so busy, just come up there so they can relax, we're smaller, we don't got the amenities, but still cools you off.
Where is the pool in Livermore?
On the south, on the, on the south side, south side of town.
First street.
Okay. And the pool is in pretty good shape otherwise?
We're working on it.
This, this is the first step.
But there's, the building needs some work too, that few years ago they painted it and stuff and old block, you know what I mean? It was built in the seventies, eighty-seven to seventy-six it was built. So there's maintenance there. We just, we'd like to keep it open because it's one more thing for the town, right? It draws people in the summer.
Well, we are in the process of putting our budget together and.
It's not gonna be a good year, I'll be honest with you. So we'll try.
Recycling, when I come here the other year. What did you ever find out or decipher on the recycling money where the Humboldt Dakota City got so much? And each one of the small towns got like a hundred dollars a quarter. And I had that per capita thing, you know, you know?
Well, we'll look to Trish for that.
Well, the best I can see is this started as kind of like an initiative to start recycling back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. And. I don't, it doesn't really specify the reason why the amounts are so high for Humboldt versus the outlying towns. I would guess it's because of the central location here with the dump or the recycling bins.
But you're also talking the city of Humboldt, not Humboldt County.
City.
Yeah. Versus us.
Humboldt County purchased the recycling.
Containers.
I think I heard it was a grant program that they started it. Maybe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, means before my time.
It's a small grant, like we got in Livermore, purchase our trailer.
So just so, is this coming out of our budget, this money that we pay the cities?
Yes.
For recycling, do we get any monies from the recycling stuff? So this is just coming out of our budget?
Yeah.
So the rest of it is just, it's all goes to Humboldt, the city of Humboldt, we.
Well, I hate to say this with our budget looking the way it is, that might be a place where.
Can you see if you can get our screen?
TV doesn't work.
Our TV don't seem to.
TV party and CS and here is, but.
I can see and hear you, so.
Right.
Per capita, you're getting probably three, four times the amount of the. I can't, I don't remember that she'd have to look at the paper, I had Dakota City, Humboldt got so much, and then Livermore got four hundred dollars a year.
I think there's about ten thousand dollars that's divided up.
Yes.
Eleven of it goes to Humboldt. And the total we spend is fifteen thousand five hundred. So then the rest is divided up proportionally.
With all the smaller town.
But this is that, we're not getting any income from the stuff that's being recycled, like the cardboard, the tin plus, plus, I mean, there is anything, but I know tin and cardboard.
Recycling.
So why, okay, so then why did, you said to encourage people to recycle, that's why they?
It looks like that's where it just started from.
But we didn't have a grant money or anything like that that we got?
No, it just comes straight from our budget. And. That's how it's working right now. Just trying, I think it was just started to promote recycling and. There really isn't any specific.
Is it a resolution, is it a? Or was it just something they decided they're gonna do, and we've just kept it on all these years?
I don't see a resolution or anything that specifies a time frame.
That we have to do it.
Or an amount or how it's, you know, set up.
So if we talk to the city, who gets all the money? And see if they would consider redistributing some of that, you suppose that'd be like talking to that cabinet?
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna wanna.
They don't wanna.
I understand what you're saying, but we're in San Jose.
You know, they got recycling too.
Yeah.
How much recycling do you got, average, a month, a year, whatever?
Well, since we got these, we got the trailers we got, we received them in February, went up to Alexandria, Minnesota and picked them up. And I was gonna give the council yearly update, so it hasn't been quite a year. Um, I just gave that to my last council report, it was, we know mixed recycling and cardboard, everything for the year. We haul, I think it was forty-two or forty-five tons of recycling, I hauled down to Fort Dodge. Made fifty-seven trips down there since February, I call it recycling. When I get done here, that's where I'm going right now, I'm probably gonna haul roughly fifty, a hundred pounds of plastic and newspaper and tin cans and everything and. And do our cardboard trailer.
Did we get anything from that?
No.
Cardboard trailer, I snake three trips a month down there.
We get nothing from that, nobody does.
No, it's, it's actually a cost.
The cardboard we get to get rid of for nothing, the mixed recycling, they charge us two dollars a pound to get rid of. Then the cardboard, they bail it, they bail it up, then when the cardboard prices get high enough, they sell the cardboard to whoever, that's how the recycling center makes their money. But it costs us nothing to get rid of that cardboard since it is just strictly cardboard.
And it's less going in our landfills.
Yes.
The cost of.
I, I, I figured out, but I think the landfill is forty-two or forty-five dollars a ton with what I hauled, it would have been, I think, ninety-eight hundred dollars that it would have cost the city last year. And landfill fees if that stuff were let, went in landfill, so just a hair under ten thousand dollars that it saved the city last year because we offer recycling.
Well, I guess my, my question for the rest of the board would be if we would ask the city of Humboldt. To consider something, because I don't know. You said it's been going on since. Ninety-seven? It's one of those things, if it's not broke, they aren't gonna fall and say, hey, we're getting ten grand or we're getting whatever the amount is, we'd love to share it.
Serve me the money, so. Choice on how you distribute it.
Maybe we should do it, we're capital base with the communities that do have recycling bins. Because I think it's our choice. Beans, there is not a resolution.
Divided up however.
We, we see fit. And I'm sure if we do that and the city disagrees with us, they will let us know.
How much per ton just for regular?
I think it's forty-two or forty-five dollars per ton.
Rick, you're on that board, do you remember?
And how much is it for the recycling?
The mixed recycling is two cents a pound.
Yeah, I do know like the cardboard, it, it varies. You know, it's kind of like the grain market, it goes up and down and they sit on it for a long time until they absolutely can't sit on it any longer than they'll get rid of it. You know, trying to wait for the prices to go up, so it isn't such a lost. But I, I do know they get some sort of rebate or refund from the D N R on the amount of pounds that we keep from going into the landfill. It gives them a break through the D N R, I can't remember exactly what it is. But they, they get a break from the D N R on the amount of poundage that we keep out of the landfill. And so there is an incentive for them for the recycling program. But I do think we need to look at it more on a per capita base, split up between the communities that do recycle. I don't know if all, all of them have recycling bins or not. Like, we got an issue when you go to like Gilmore, it's on county line and Renwick, which, actually, there isn't much of Renwick on the other side, but I don't. Renwick, they have their own trailer because I see it going to the landfill. That might be more fair if we do it that way. And like I say, if there is a resolution out there or twenty eighty agreement, I don't know about it, but I'm sure if the city knows about it, they will let us know.
Right.
And since, yeah, since the nineties when this started recycling, it changed so much because of Amazon and all that, FedEx delivering boxes. We get boxes in town, you know, FedEx trucks dropping them off all over town, well, people's gotta do something with the cardboard besides burn it.
Right.
You know?
I understand.
Everything that comes in the cardboard box anymore. Plastic junk. Milk jugs.
I think this is something we need to look at during our budget work session. Uh, if it's something that we can still keep viable and maybe change the way it's distributed it, uh, to make it more fair. I, I think a lot of the talk was back in the past, Humboldt had the central grocery stores, well, everybody'd be coming there, be a good place for everybody to get rid of their stuff. But back then, I don't know if all these communities even had recycling trailers, you know, back in this.
Ask of hauling it to the dump or to the recycling plant? It's just a, just an alternate to forty-five dollars a ton, you can get rid of it for nothing, that was a savings and it settled. I'm just asking because I don't know.
Well, she said it was just to encourage recycling.
Well, Billy brought it up, was it last year or the year before, whatever it was?
Yeah, I think it was last year.
We've taught or we've thought about it, but we haven't done anything, so like Rick said, if we, Trish made a note. And we'll try to come up with some magic formula that's gonna uh hopefully help the towns that are actively recycling. Because you guys have a cost, if you're driving down to Fort Dodge to dump, then. Something that you have, you're paying for, so we'll, we can't guarantee that we can do it all, but we can do, relook at it and see where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
We thank you for coming.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
I'll just tell you that as far as our budget goes, we're gonna be as tight as we can be and if we can make it work, we'll do what we can do, so.
And if you have any sway with Mark Thompson or Senator Guth, they're, they're going for bud, they're going for property tax reform again. So we're losing five hundred thousand now, if they keep at it, we're gonna lose more. So essentially, then we gotta look at what really is essential services and what we can do and what we can't do. So get your letter going.
Government telling you we should step back and show all electric, but yes, each one of them jump on a jet and fly anywhere they need to go in a matter of minutes or hours and. Do what we say, don't do what we do, is the theory in Washington, so. Fall and, fall and call, we'll do what we can, we appreciate you coming.
Yep, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd come and help you, but I don't think I'd be any help.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, looks like we have a Mr. Ben.
Morning.
Good morning.
I might have to third places.
I have just two items on the agenda, the second and third are the same thing. The, the first item is. Um, the, the first item is to approve resolution TX. Twenty twenty-five oh one dash twenty. Uh, a resolution authorizing the transfer of. Uh, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars from Rural Services uh, to secondary roads. So this is half of the uh, obligation of Rural Services for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-five that we're in right now. We, um. The way that we operate is we basically run for six months, get a transfer from, from uh, Rural Services. Uh, reimbursement basically, and then we run for another six months and then we get a reimbursement the first week in June.
So we move from one pile to the other pile, the?
Take it out of one pocket, put it in the other, yes.
One didn't get, they basically didn't get done in the last fiscal year, so it gets moved, correct?
What's that now?
It doesn't get done in the, in the same fiscal year, so that's everything transferred to another fiscal year?
No, so for, for this, um, we do our budgeting, obviously like right now is when we work on budgeting. Fiscal year starts the beginning of July and then we. We operate for six months on what we have for reserve or carryover before we ask for a, a transfer.
This money in a, some kind of a.
I'm sure we get interest on.
Yeah. The treasurer's office is constantly checking with surrounding banks as far as who's giving best rate of return.
If it was stagnant, there's no sense in that.
Well, with that.
Motion to approve um, resolution TX twenty twenty-five oh one dash twenty.
I will. All right, we have a motion in a second for the resolution. Uh, TX twenty twenty-five oh one dash two zero. We'll need a roll call on that, so Sandy?
Yes.
Bob? Mike?
Yep.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce, I, all eyes. Okay. Then you're the second, third are together, you said?
The second and third are together, the uh, the quote for boring is the same as the uh, quote for geotechnical services. Um, I texted Perry before I had. The final number of quotes returned back to me, so. Uh, I believe you guys have a, a small spreadsheet that shows the breakdown in costs. Uh, between the three companies, so we. Reached out to Alender Butsky. Who is a contractor we've worked with in the past as well as Terricon. Uh, you can see their two prices, uh, certified testing services is. A reliable company, but I've never worked with them. Um, they're based out of Sioux City, but they have offices uh, closer to us. Either in, it's either in Storm Lake or Emmitsburg, I can't remember which off the top of my head now, but. Um, they came in uh, significantly cheaper.
Seventeen hundred bucks, you gonna try?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so you take that uh, times three, cause we're looking at three bridges, I mean, it's. Basically like doing a full bridge for free for us, so.
Look there, Beck, I mean, you've done some checking on them, everything, everybody that's worked with.
Everybody that's worked with them has been, you know. Has been happy with their services, uh, so what we're looking at doing is bridges fifty-three, sixty and sixty-one. Um, those are, uh. Two of the three are already on our five-year program, um, the third one, we inspect every year. We get it done and we get it done at a discounted rate because we're having multiple bridges done at the same time. And these never expire. So, I mean, if we decide that we're gonna replace the bridge next year, it's good if we decide, decide that we're gonna replace the bridge twenty-five years from now. What's underground is the same, so.
Which bridge are they in?
Uh, Divine, um, Borman and Classy, so.
Okay, anything else, any other questions? With that, I've been looking for a motion.
I like a motion.
We have a motion in a second and we're, the motion is for certified, is that?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation is that we go with certified testing services.
All right, motion in a second for certified testing services. Any other discussions? All in favor, aye? Pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, anything else? I was, uh. Fuel and. Hopefully we got a little. Uh, dinner and, or tomorrow and this morning, if anybody's out and about.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're, we're still stockpiling and hauling rocks, so we've. We're running straight one right now with the temperatures as cold as they are. We've completed stockpiles at quite a few locations, I think we're finishing up uh, Livermore and. Hardy right now, so the Rutland Stockpile Location is done, um. Up north, Gilmore is done, we've hauled some to Livermore, some to Boden, quite a bit to Hardy, but. Yeah, just trying to wrap that up.
Are we doing much tonnage than as last year, or are we just doing a dollar amount?
Dollar amount, um, everything that we hauled from Severs Griffith. The other day, they honored last year's price, cause they hadn't come out with this year's price, um. They did send notification of what this year's price is gonna be, it's either. Nine four, excuse me, nine forty or nine fifty a ton. Whereas Martin Marietta is ten eighty a ton for us, so.
Are they actively crushing now, or is this stuff that they've had stockpiled and? Which, this stuff you're hauling, I mean, is this all, they aren't, are they running?
They're not, they're not crushing right now, um, Severs Griffith is actually closed, they just brought a. Uh, loader operator in the day that we were gonna man's haul, but otherwise they're, they're closed, um. My knowledge, Martin Marietta is not crushing right now, so.
All right, and I guess looked at my phone and I didn't see any. That stuff we don't wanna talk about in the near future.
I mean, if we, if we got it, that means that the temperatures actually went up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's too cold, the snow right now.
Well, they say that, but people in Alaska say you're crazy, you say it's too cold, but I guess. Everybody get an extra blanket for tonight, the way it sounds, cause the wind's gonna howl and.
Yeah, I would say tonight's supposed to be the.
Well, we'll move on from that.
Yes.
All right, thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving down, uh, accepting place on file, a cost advisory service incorporated. Annual report for Humboldt County and Webster County Social Services, who's this, this?
This is our annual report from Cost Advisory Services on. DHS and how much they will pay us to have their services here and what, um.
For a light in the office.
Yes. Okay, so this is just for everybody in office, so what are they, what are they proposing? Um. We will receive back. Nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
So I'm assuming that would be like a part-time. I mean.
They're.
Couple days a week.
They take, it's kinda like whenever they take your square footage of all the, and they give you so much per square footage for them, for the year. Cause I know when we were C S S, that's what they used to do, if they. Where, if they ran off the space, they would.
So that's the price they give us, that's not something that we negotiate?
No.
We can't call them back and say, well, we need two point seven.
It's kinda like what they do across the board for everybody, even the state, it's needless to state, state funds everything, so.
So you said, what was the number, nineteen?
Eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Even?
Yes.
All right.
Well, I'll make that motion to. Place on file the cost advisory services annual report for Humboldt County Webster Social Services.
All right, we have a motion. And a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Pose same sign, motion carried. Uh, our next one is appoint Susan Tilly to the Humboldt County Representative to the Midas Board. All days, Suzie doesn't come in. We're gonna make her actually do a speech for acceptance.
And Rick, you talked to Susan, didn't you?
Yes, I've talked to her several times and I reaffirmed with her last week when she's there that if she was willing to serve and. And um, basically, uh, at the next Midas meeting, they will, they have to be accepted also through their meeting, so.
Okay, and so we've got our city representative, but now we gotta come up with an economic development representative, correct?
Yes.
So we need to be thinking about who we might wanna. Um, ask to be on that board for that.
Linky shaking his head, yes.
Well, congratulations, Matt, sounds like you won by a landslide.
All right, well, I'll make that motion to appoint Susan Tilly for Humboldt County Representative to the Midas Board.
We have a motion in a second to accept Suzie Tilly as the county, Humboldt County Representative as Midas Board. Any other discussion? All in favor? Pose same sign, motion carries.
She'll do a good job.
Yeah. Okay, looks like. You have anything else, Trish, for us, or we wanna do our committee reports?
Okay. Thank you. I'm really not, I never use it. Okay. Um, let's see there, I had ministerial on January fifteenth. Um, Decat daycare was moved to this week, so we didn't have that one. Um. And I did do the slam stigma on Friday night. So everybody needs to be aware of that. You know, actually, it, I was, there was a lot of young kids, but there were some adults that did start. So I think it was a good, good interaction with, with everybody and, um. Of course, I talked about the legislature that to the adults, they gotta, everybody's gotta do their bit and. Email, call, whatever, so we gave them information on that. But no, I think it went really well, we had a lot of. The Decat people were there, you know how, um, Eric was always talking about Decat, so I talked to the Decat person, that's where we're having this meeting. On this Wednesday, that's why I can't go to daycare this Wednesday, but I actually found out what Decat is. And they fill in the blanks where, for money for kids and stuff like that, where. If Medicaid doesn't fall in or Medicare, but she's good, she said, she gave me a brief thing on that, she says, we're gonna talk more in depth, cause. All three of us are new on that board this year, so she says she has her work cut out for her, she says it'll be a two and a half hour meeting next to. Or this Wednesday, I'm like, oh, okay.
There you go.
But basically, it's, they pick up the pieces where other, um. Groups, you know, don't have the money or they. They're not on Medicaid, but maybe, you know, like parents working that. Still are just barely making it, but they, but they make just enough too much for Medicaid. And uh, so that's kind of where they fill in the gaps there to help families, so I was pretty interested. How are they funded then? Through the state, but like they said, they don't think, they think in a year or two, they'll be gone too, because the state is. Every year they give them less and less money to. Work on, but then we have a six to eight billion dollar surplus, so I'm now.
Yeah, don't get that?
No.
Yeah. Thought we're gonna buy, uh, part of Southern Minnesota.
I was gonna look into that, I know I heard it, but I didn't hear the report on it, so I was gonna look into it, I never did. Like, they're gonna give up the, that, I doubt it.
That's what I thought.
Now, they, they get rid of a lot of Republicans that way.
Yeah. Well, that'd be like Worthington, Minnesota, wouldn't it, and Fremont and, um, Laverne, um.
Blue Earth?
Yeah, Blue Earth, that's when I was, I couldn't think of one sixteen, yeah, Blue Earth.
You said Fairmont?
Fairmont, yeah, I said Fairmont, I think I did.
You said Fremont.
Did I say Fremont?
We're gonna take some of Nebraska's stew to the house.
That'd be nice.
All right, what do you got, Bob?
I was, had the E M A meeting and the nine-one-one commission meeting on Thursday the sixteenth. That's all I had for the week.
You went to the meeting with, uh, uh, new officers meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, that.
Well, that counts.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know that, I'm, I'm new at this, so. The ISAC meeting.
The ISAC, yeah.
On uh, Wednesday and Thursday. Yes, I was there with you.
Yep.
Did Ricky with him?
Yes. And he fell asleep three times.
No.
He's got pictured.
Oh, man.
Yeah, that's all I had for the week.
Uh, it's the ISAC meetings and went up, looked at drainage district eleven. That open ditch that we got dredging on both sides, we're gonna have hearing this later this spring sometime to finish that one, there's. Actually about two foot of water sitting on the backside is almost like a dam, but it needs cleaning. Oh, I've explored that. And Monday I wandered down to that city council meeting on a dam. Learned a lot.
Okay.
That's it.
Rick?
Tuesday I had public safety, um, disappointed new chair and vice chair and. Went through our budget, worked on budget there, and then Thursday I went down to Fort Dodge to Midas and sat with Shirley down there and visited with her for. Just about an hour to get familiar with Midas. Being as I'm gonna be new on that board, but that's about all I had.
All right, uh, I had no meetings, I guess I saw some pictures that were sent uh, from. Uh, for you, all right, pictures that, uh, we talked about last week with, uh. Up there, um, by Brad, is it Bradgate?
Drainage district eighty-four.
So we have quite a few pictures that, um, have been taken, so we should have at least a, a starting point. For where, where he's headed, so. I have several meetings this week for. I guess we'll see where we end up. With that, Trish, if you don't have anything else, I guess we're, we can adjourn and start our budget workshop.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to adjourn.
In a second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Pose same sign, motion carries at nine eleven.
I got, Trish, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I use the same passcode to access the work session zoom.
Uh, no, there's a separate email I sent you.
My emails aren't coming through for some reason. So you'll have, you'll have to text.
I'll text it to you, is that all right?
Yep, that'll work.
Where you at?
All right.
Where you at?
I'm, I'm I'm working hard on international relations with Humboldt County.
Non-extradition country.
You have an air conditioner behind you or?
Yeah.
That's an air conditioner.
What the hell?
That's, that's an air conditioner. It's running on high.
All right, we'll wait to hear from you a little bit, Rick.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Ben, we got them, has them, uh, advisory committee for the.